Karen, it looks like we have all commissioners present.
Okay, I don't see Lee or Phil. I know Phil thought he might be a little bit late.
Okay, I see Lee and Phil. Phil's logged in twice.
Okay, okay, so I just don't see the video then, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm assuming that Lee H is Lee Hildum, right?
Yeah, yep, I see him now. So all the commissioners are present?
They are. And it looks like we also have Kara Hall and Scott.
Okay, great. It looks like everybody's here.
Oh, that doesn't look like Phil. Okay, we're gonna have to log you out of one of the connections, because, oh, there it is now. Nope. We have you in there twice, logged in twice. So are you logged in on two different devices?
No.
Okay, give me just a second here. I'm going to remove one of them. Hopefully, that's not you. Okay, now talk.
Okay, Phil is not here yet, so I was just getting things set up for when he does get here.
Okay, that's good. I logged you out. You were logged in on two devices, so I don't know if Phil was trying to. And we were getting backfeed. You can go ahead and shut off the video if you want, and then when Phil comes in, you can turn it on.
All right.
All right. Okay, technical issues solved. It's 4:01 PM on Monday, July 17. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to order. And we have some introductions to do first off. And I think I'm gonna go first and jump right in and introduce Bert Gregory, who is the most recent planning commissioner. Bert comes with a super solid set of tools in his tool belt. He's been a name partner, main partner, in one of Seattle's best architecture firms. He's done projects all around the country and is thoroughly familiar with the kind of work that we do. And I am very pleased to have you here. Do you wanna unmute yourself and say hello and add anything to your resume that is pertinent?
Oh, gosh, I'm very excited to be part of the team and look forward to helping Manzanita grow with grace. I have a lot of experience around the country, especially, most recently, in some resort communities that are facing large growth issues, affordability, workforce housing issues. So very much looking forward to collaborating.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. And Scott, do you want to introduce? Scott?
So, we have two Scots. You can call me whatever you want, and then we have Scott Freganes. And I probably butchered your last name, Scott. But you can call me Scott G, and you can call Scott Scott F. Scott is from 3J Consulting. He is our contract planner, and he replaced Walt. So he will be working with staff in the planning commission. And Scott, I'm gonna let you go ahead and give a brief introduction of yourself.
Well, Chair and Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here and introduce myself. As Scott said, we got two Scots, so it might get confusing, but if you want, you can call me Frego or whatever you wanna call Scott F, Scott G, but we'll figure that as we go. As you mentioned, I'm your contract planner, so we've been brought on for planning assistance. I've been a planner for about 23 years now. I really started out in long-range planning, so doing comprehensive plans and things like your transportation system plan, which we're gonna talk a lot about today. But recently, in the last, I don't know, I'd say six to seven years, I've gotten into doing current planning and helping city staff out with what you do as a planning commission and what staff does at the counter. Every day, someone comes in with a permit application. I kind of fell into it, to be honest. I have kind of a love for the North Coast. And we had family and friends in Rockaway, and I was spending a lot of time there. And lo and behold, about six years ago, they said, well, we need some planning assistance. And so I kind of reluctantly raised my hand. And so I've been Rockaway's planner now for about six years. I did Bay City for a couple of years. They did their current planning. I'm helping out Garibaldi as well, and now you all in Manzana. So I do have quite a bit of experience in Tillamook County and the North Coast. And hopefully, I can be of good use and help with the planning commission. So thanks for having me.
Great. Well, welcome, Scott, also. Anybody else that we need to introduce? Kara, do you want to introduce yourself just briefly, or do you wanna wait until it's your turn to present?
Yeah, happy to give just a quick introduction. So Kara Hall, I'm a transportation engineer with Fair and Peers, and we are the transportation planning and engineering consultants that have been supporting development of the Nahalem Bay Transportation System Plan, which includes Manzanita. And then I'm also am joined by James Feldman and Caroline Crisp from ODOT, who have been working on this from the ODOT side in partnership with the three communities.
Okay, fantastic. And I guess we'll hear from you two later, if that makes sense?
Yes.
Great, okay. Next issue on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 30th and June 16th Planning Commission meetings. Let's take the May 30th first, do them in order. Are there any, first of all, I know these came over the transom kind of late today. Have the commissioners been able to read and review them? If not, we'll hold over for another day. I wanna make sure that everybody's had a chance to review them, and if there are any additions, corrections, errors, spelling problems, grammar issues, we should sort them out now.
Karen, I haven't had time to review them. I just arrived at Tahoe, and I'm finding my way around the cabin. So if we can, that's why I'm struggling to find someplace you're not blinded by light. If we could put that off for a meeting, that would be great.
Okay, with no objection, we'll put the minutes off for the next meeting. Okay? Okay.
Karen, I'll need to abstain since I wasn't at those meetings.
Okay, that's, yeah, I got your note on that. Thank you. That makes sense. Are there members of the audience that have anything they'd like to bring up to the commission before we get on with the agenda today?
Karen, I have one hand up. Catherine, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sound okay?
Yep.
Great. Hey, I wanted to, because she's so modest and won't do it for herself, I wanna say a couple of words about Karen Reddick Yurka for a minute. I watched her in the city's workshop this past week on the 12th. And for those of you on the commission who may not have had a chance to see that meeting, either live or on videotape, she did a terrific job of representing all of you, expressing her enthusiasm for what a great team she's got and how much work there is to do. So enthusiasm is a good quality to have with everything coming up. But she just really did a good job, along with Leila, explaining what was coming up and how the planning commission is gonna be moving forward with some really important work and an important role as it relates to the comp plan. So I'd just like to acknowledge that and thank Karen for her work in that meeting. So that's it.
Aw shucks. Oh, thank you, Catherine.
That's all the hands we have up.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Kara to talk about the regional transportation system plan that you've been working on for two years now, is that right?
Yes, and we are just kind of closing the last gap here and ready to begin the adoption process. I'm not sure, Scott, if you're able to enable screen sharing for me. Oh, I see it now. Thank you. Okay, so before I dive in, I'll just kind of give you a quick overview here of kind of what we're gonna cover. So hopefully, you're all aware that we do have a draft TSP that has been posted on the Transportation System Plan website and has also been posted on the city's website. So that's been available for a couple of months now for public review. And the last piece of the transportation system plan process is starting the adoption process. I'm gonna give you an overview of the plan itself, and then Scott is gonna chime in at the end. He's been in coordination with Leila about developing a plan for moving this through the actual adoption process. So my presentation will be fairly high level. But knowing that there are many of you who are new to planning commission over the past year and have not been involved in this since day one, like Karen and some others that have been around a bit longer, may have wanted to just make sure that we were able to kind of talk through all the things that went into the development of this and what the outcomes look like and how that can be used to inform some important items that you all will be kind of tackling over the next year, like comprehensive plan updates and things like that. So kind of diving into the logistics of what we're gonna cover, I'll start with just an overview of what a transportation system plan is, what it does, what it doesn't do. We'll talk a little bit about the goals and objectives and policies that are included in the transportation system plan specifically for Manzanita. One outcome of this is developing some different modal networks. So really thinking through about the different roadways that exist in Manzana, where it makes sense to prioritize space for people walking and biking and what that space might look like. We have a number of projects for each of the three communities and a list of regional projects. So those are projects that have crossed jurisdictional boundaries, really focused on connecting the three communities off of US 101. And then just a note on implementation and what this all means for you as it moves through the adoption process and becomes your transportation system plan and ultimately part of your comprehensive plan. So what is a transportation system plan? At the highest level, it is a plan that describes your transportation system. The real objectives here are to outline projects, programs, and policies to meet the needs of users in your community, both today and looking out to where you all wanna be in the future as you grow and as land use development continues in the area. This TSP is also typically serves as a transportation component of the local comprehensive plan. So this is really setting the goals and objectives for the comprehensive plan as it relates to transportation. So why develop a TSP? Manzanita's current TSP was developed in 2003, so it hasn't been evaluated in 20 years. And we recognize that things have changed a lot since then, and things will continue to change in the future. So this is really an opportunity in partnership with the Haileman Wheeler to evaluate how well the existing transportation system is working in the three communities, look at needs that may have changed since that last set of goals and projects were developed, and then also look out to the future. It's also a way to establish shared goals and position yourself for investment opportunities like grants in the future. So a big component of being able to secure grants is having clearly defined goals and projects that have been vetted by the community. And the transportation system plan is a way to achieve that and also to kind of position yourself to advocate for Manzanita's needs within the region. So what does a TSP do? It defines what the community wants. I'll talk briefly about all of the community engagement that's gone into development of this plan. It also documents the existing transportation infrastructure. So early on in the process, there was a lot of work that went into understanding where people travel today, how they travel today, where there are safety needs. And then looking out into the future, so what kind of improvements will be needed in the future as we think about growth, as we think about, you know, continued visitors to the area and how we can best meet the needs of everyone in the future. We have identified potential funding sources that the city can consider for being able to implement some of the projects that are identified in this TSP. And then we've also identified a set of high priority projects. So what are those projects that we heard from community members were most needed? And what did they wanna see as we look out over, you know, the next five to 10 years? So a few things a TSP does not do. It does not include project refinement and design. So across the three communities and the regional list, we've identified about 80 different projects. Those are high level in nature at this point. So any kind of refinement of what that actually looks like, what construction of those entails, will need to be identified in kind of processes that follow adoption of the plan. It also doesn't identify specific timing for when projects will be built. We recognize that the biggest component of when you can build something is when there's funding available for it. So there's no timeline tied to these projects. As I mentioned, if you review the plan, you will see some identified as high priority. Those are ones we heard that people are interested in, wanna see advanced. But there is not funding tied to those, and that's specifically because the TSP does not allocate funding specifically. Does identify opportunities that you all can explore to secure more funding, but does not come with any specific dollars tied to improvements. So you can see here an overview of all of the processes included in development of the transportation system plan. So I talked about looking at the existing and future conditions. So that's things like how many vehicles are on the roadway today? How many do we expect to be there in the future? Where are crashes occurring today? We also developed a set of transportation goals, so I'll talk about those shortly. But those are really kind of setting the stage for what the region and Manzana wants to achieve over the next 20 years as it relates to transportation. Also, a set of performance metrics. So these are really aimed at defining how are we gonna measure progress towards those goals over the next 20 years. So the next step was policies, programs, and projects. So these are actually making recommendations on different policies that you all can adopt, either as part of your comprehensive plan, code amendments, really setting the stage for you all to establish the plans you all wanna have moving forward. And then also that list of projects that's needed to really move you all towards the goals. I mentioned we did look at funding, so taking a look at how much funding the city has historically had for transportation projects and then different sources that can be explored. That led us to development of a draft plan, which I mentioned has been available publicly since about March. And then we are officially starting the council adoption process with this sharing with you all today. So what is in the TSP? So there are really, there's five volumes total, and there's three of interest for you all in Manzana. So volume one is the TSP overview and regional projects. So this volume covers kind of the TSP process. That includes the public involvement and the stakeholder input. It does include the regional goals and objectives. So what were kind of those four goals that we're trying to achieve across the Nahalem Bay region as a whole? And then regional recommendations and projects as well. So this is where the projects kind of connecting the three communities are documented. Any projects on US 101 are documented in this specific volume. The other volume of relevance to you all is volume two, which is Manzanita's specific transportation system plan. This is where all things Manzana live. So there are two additional goals for Manzana that are unique to your needs and desires. This is where we've documented any proposed networks for vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians within Manzana. This entails the project list for Manzana and the path to implementation for you all specifically. I mentioned there are three. The other one that will be important to you all is volume five. That is where all the technical work that went into developing this lives. That includes things like recommended code amendments. So Scott will be working with all of you to get that kind of tied into updates to land use code, comprehensive plan, and all of those items. So looking forward, just wanted to provide kind of a quick overview for how this TSP will be used. So I mentioned this earlier. It will be an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Those goals and objectives that we'll talk through here shortly will be incorporated as transportation policies. And the TSP is typically adopted by reference, so in this case, that would be volumes one, two, and five for you all. I mentioned updates to the development code. There are kind of three pieces of that, so as I mentioned, we have some recommendations for that. Another big outcome of the TSP is developing street design and access standards. So we've provided some recommendations for what the different streets in Manzana could look like and how development of those should occur when you think about access spacing, how far apart are intersections, driveways, things like that. And then also including the recommendation for the addition of traffic impact analysis guidelines. So any new development that may be proposed in the city, setting some thresholds at which they have to look at how new traffic generated by that might change existing travel patterns or volumes in the city. So diving into volume one, I'll just provide an overview of some of the regional components of this and how it relates to you all in Manzana. So the regulatory context for developing this is based on Oregon revised statutes, specifically the transportation planning rule, which sets some standards for how land use and transportation need to work together, really requiring that the TSP considers the current comprehensive plan land use and any growth that's assumed. Also requirements to look at alternative modes of travel, so making sure that we're not focusing only on how people drive, but also how they might wanna walk and bike. And then just a note that because of the population of Manzana, there are some exemptions within the statewide regulatory context. For background, we know there are many plans that have been developed over the last 20 years in the area that have informed this. So, you know, using the Manzana downtown plan as a starting point, we know that, you know, over the past couple of years, development of the Trails Master Plan has been a focus for community members, so looking for ways to incorporate that. Also looking at the county's plans for the area, because there are several roadways, you know, within Manzana that are actually owned and operated by the county. And then also thinking kind of regionally, we know there's a lot of interest in the Salmon Berry Trail and seeing that connected. So really wanting to make sure we capture and are consistent with some of the other plans that are already in place, both in Manzana and the region. So a little bit on kind of the public involvement process that went into this. There were several different ways. We gathered input from community members throughout this process. One was a planning advisory committee. So that was developed with local representatives from each of the three communities and then also folks from the county. And that group really acted as a sounding board and kind of worked to vet some of the key milestones throughout the process. So things like development of the existing and future conditions, making sure that there was not something that was missed in the technical data, vetting of the goals and priorities as we developed those, and then later the project list. Also coordination between agency representatives from the three cities and then the Department of Transportation as well as Tillamook County. Because the early parts of this plan were all happening during COVID, we did rely a lot on the project website to share information with community members and gather input. That included virtual events and online surveys. And also doing some sharing of digital and printed advertisements, so things like getting posts up in grocery stores and things like that locally, but also sending out email blasts to people on the city's email list. Last summer, we were finally able to host an in-person open house, which we had pretty great attendance at. So we were able to come and table at the Manzana Farmer's Market on a Friday, get the word out, talk to folks, and then had about 80 people come out to the in-person house, open house, the following week. We've also done a number of planning commission and city council briefings along the way. Again, really just to share those different milestones and make sure that we're truly reflecting community needs and desires as we go. And then really, the reason we're here today, starting the public hearings as part of the adoption process. So that's really the opportunity for you all in the community to view the draft plan and identify any final changes that may be needed as we move through the adoption process. I just talked through most of these, but we did have three events throughout the course of the project where we were gathering really targeted feedback from folks. So the first was on the goals and objectives. That second touch point with the community really focused on the draft project list. And then the last one was helping to prioritize the different projects that we were recommending as the higher priority projects on that final list. So with that, I'll kind of talk through the four regional goals. So these regional goals were used to evaluate all the projects, both regionally and within the three cities. These were really goals that we heard kind of alignment on as we talked to community members across Nahalem, Manzana, and Wheeler. So the first one was quality of life, and this is really focused on kind of balancing transportation needs of people who live in these communities and people that visit. We recognize that US 101 kind of traverses Nahalem and Wheeler, also touches Manzana and is how most people get there. So we know we need to connect people regionally, but also wanna make sure that the people who live here full-time can travel as well. And also thinking about how we can provide equitable access to the different facilities and making sure that people can walk and bike, and that we're really thinking about regional connections. Also, another important one is creating comfortable downtown spaces, just making sure that we're supporting businesses kind of in our downtown and commercial cores, making sure that people can access those areas whether they want to walk, bike, or drive. And then another focus here was just reducing that. And then another focus here was just reducing that travel, vehicle travel between the cities. So thinking about maybe creative ways to connect people between the three cities. Water taxi being one that was thrown out, but also you'll see some recommendations around transit options to connect the cities as well. So goal two was creating safer connections. So knowing that we need to make it safe for everyone who travels, specifically for people walking, biking or using other non-auto modes. And then thinking about how we can reduce the number of crashes on US 101. So some key objectives under this one include identifying key non-motorized routes between the communities, connecting business and recreational destinations, improving areas where there have been a higher occurrence crashes. And then really collaborating with ODOT specifically on US 101 is that's a facility that's owned and operated by the state. So goal three was planning for the future. We want to make sure we're developing a transportation system that's resilient. We know that your communities are positioned to kind of face multiple extreme weather events. And we want to make sure that we're thinking about resiliency as we improve and develop the transportation system and making sure that emergency vehicles have multiple ways to access people who may be trapped or needing to get into or out of a community. Goal four was supporting fiscal responsibility. So that's really thinking about the funding available over the long term for transportation and how we can be strategic with those dollars. So under this one, it's thinking about ways to collaborate with other communities. Maybe that's on grants, but really just looking at ways to make available dollars go further. And then also making sure we're considering operation maintenance costs as we make choices for future investments. So just a quick overview of different findings. So for US 101, we did look at volume along the corridor and at key intersections to determine if there was additional capacity needed. That included looking at volume data from 2020, making some adjustments to account for COVID and how that was changing travel patterns. And then also looking out 20 years to 2040, based on ODOT's projections for the corridor. Two key findings here. So today we know that capacity is sufficient to meet demand. We do however know that visitor traffic impacts the experience of local users. We know visitors don't travel as efficiently. They may not know exactly where they're going. They're slowing down, looking for parking and all of those things can impact the capacity and travel experience for people who live in the area. In the future, additional capacity is not needed based on expected growth. But we do want to be mindful of projects and improvements that can help move people more efficiently. And thinking about how we can address some of those, those problem locations. We also looked at safety. So we looked at five years worth of crash data. Most crashes occur on US 101 and we know that vehicle speed was a factor in many crashes. We also heard that as a need for many community members as we were talking with folks, especially the, the portion of US 101 between Manzanita and Nahalem. And just wanting to understand if there were opportunities to include projects that help to slow people down there. So thinking about enhanced curve delineation, we also saw that being a contributor to crashes. Just the natural curvature in the roadway, making sure people are aware of that and driving the correct speed limit. Looking at ways to improve crossings and then sidewalk gaps. We know there aren't sidewalks along US 101 in some of those areas. And thinking about how we can address that, especially through Nahalem and Wheeler, where it's a vital part of their downtowns. For the bikes at the regional level, we know that bikes are required to use the existing shoulders on US 101, which are narrow and can be uncomfortable, especially when speeds are high. So we heard a lot about the desire to have some separated space and also facilities that connects communities off of 101 and also to the state park. So a strong desire from community members to see some options to walk and bike that don't require them to use US 101, especially to get to Manzanita and the state park. We know that's, those are key destinations for people in Nahalem and Wheeler. On the pedestrian side of things, I already mentioned this, that sidewalks are really limited to downtown areas. Crossing US 101 is challenging. And many of the existing sidewalks are in poor condition. So looking for opportunities to, to improve those and make those a better experience for people who choose to walk in the area. So for the regional project list, I do have kind of an overview of the projects, but not planning to talk about them in detail, but I'm happy to take questions. So these are projects that fall outside the jurisdiction of Manzanita and Nahalem or Wheeler. They're primarily located on roads that are owned or operated by ODOT or Tillamook County. And then also ones that cross jurisdictional boundaries or focused on creating a regional connection. So as we developed projects, we really ended up with kind of five project categories. So the first being signage, wayfinding and what we've kind of called the other. So those are projects that are focused on, you know, adding enhanced signage to kind of connect people to destinations, make it easier for them to get where they're trying to go. The second category was bicycle and pedestrian enhancements. So these are projects that are focused on improving an existing roadway facility to better accommodate space for people who want to walk and bike. We do have a number of roadway projects included in this. Those are projects primarily focused on improving the quality of existing roadways. There are a number of roads within the region that we've heard are in poor condition and improvements are needed. We also have safety projects. So those are things like enhanced curve delineation to improve safety on US 101, traffic calming strategies to help slow people down. And then new bicycle pedestrian connections. So these projects are the ones we're really focused on creating new facilities for people walking and biking. In some cases, those are proposed to kind of parallel existing roadway alignments. And you'll see other projects that are creating an entirely new connection. So while we haven't allocated a specific timeline, we have kind of slotted projects into these three different categories. Primarily informed by the cost of the projects and the complexity. Though I do want to note that projects can really be implemented anytime funding is available for them. So near-term projects or projects that can be implemented within the next five years. These are projects that are typically focused on improving existing facilities or maybe a specific intersection that needs improvements. The medium-term projects are projects that we think are more likely to take about five to 10 years. Those often are more expensive, requiring more substantial upgrades to existing facilities and even starting to see some of those new connections. And then the long-term projects are really those that are identified to be kind of more than 10 years due to just the cost and complexity. Another component of that could be substantial coordination between agencies. So, you know, projects that are going to require coordination with, you know, Nahalem and Wheeler, and then maybe also ODOT or the county. We know those things can just take a little bit longer and be a bit more complex to implement. So you'll see here, we have the map of all of the regional projects. Just a couple I will highlight for you. So it's labeled as R9. This project that would connect, create a new bicycle and pedestrian connection between Nahalem and provide connection down to the state park. You'll also see some connections on the Carty Boulevard and Classic Street. This shows the county portion of that. On the Manzanita map, you'll see similar improvements proposed on the Manzanita project list, but really just trying to enhance the connection specifically for people walking and biking. We also have some improvements on Ocean Road. That's a roadway that's though just on the border of the Manzanita city limit. It is operated by Tillamook County. So, so that's kind of what's driving this one to be on this map. That includes enhancements to provide more space for people walking and biking along Ocean Road. We know that's a challenging location as people travel to the beach and then also crossings at Lenida and Ocean Road. As we, we know people walk from Lenida out to the beach. We also have the Salmon Berry Trail connection down in Wheeler. We heard that was a really important project for folks kind of across all three communities. And then some connections in Bayside Gardens, which are really aimed at improving those existing facilities just to make it a little easier and comfortable for people who want to bike and walk there today until either this connection kind of south of US 101 can be constructed. And then also including a project to consider options to provide space for people walking and biking directly along US 101. We know that would be challenging given the existing buildings that are, exist in that area as well as just topography. So we did want to kind of include both as, as part of the long-term vision. So I, I know that's a lot. I will pause there for any questions anyone has on a more regional project before diving into some of the specifics from Manzanita.
Kara, I have a question. I have seen over the last three or four weeks, lots of golf carts wheeling around the city of Manzanita, which are allowed on the roads in town. Was there any discussion or thought given to using golf carts as a connector between Nahalem and Manzanita?
Golf carts specifically on that regional connector that you saw for this R9 project have not come up. But just based on the fact that, you know, as I was mentioned earlier, any of these projects would need to be refined before they can be implemented. There are certainly opportunity to talk about, you know, how wide you would want that to be, what that connection would need to look like to facilitate use by golf carts. And if there was a desire for that use from the community members. So it hasn't come up, but definitely something that could be considered as that project was moved forward.
Thank you.
Kara, I have a question from a regional strategy. Was there anything that looked at evacuation, emergency evacuation in case of wildfire or tsunami?
Yes. So there is an evacuation map included in the TSP. So that is included in the regional one. And then that was also a part of the conversation specifically for like project R9, that connection between Manzanita and Nahalem. And if that should be built in a way that could help to facilitate evacuation. There were some mixed feedback from community members of whether we wanted to see that be like a wider paved connection that you would need to facilitate emergency evacuation versus maintaining a more natural feel. Part of that connection is existing utility roads that folks do use today. So it's a little bit rudimentary in nature, but there is some use of that. And we heard from some people, they really appreciate the very natural feel of that. And we're hesitant to see that kind of be expanded into something that maybe included some sort of less natural surface. So it did come up from that perspective of as we were kind of building out some of these multimodal facilities and how we could incorporate evacuation planning in them. But what those facilities look like and what kind of travel they can facilitate would need to be part of that kind of refinement process.
And how about firefighter use of some of these trails in terms of width for a firefighting truck? Not a big truck, but the crews and things.
So far, any of the trails that are proposed are proposed to be like roughly 12 foot in width and not intended for that use. But again, as kind of project refinement were to happen, if that was an interest and a desire, there, there could be an opportunity to, to explore that.
Right. Thank you.
Kara, I, I was wondering if the plan thought about, took into account, considered the interrelationship between transportation and housing. You know, people get on the road and drive to get from where they live to where they work. And, you know, if Manzanita housing prices continue as they have been and we don't find some way to get workforce housing in the area. I assume the same goes for Nahalem and Wheeler too. That changes the traffic dynamic a lot because everybody's going to be commuting from Seaside or Tillamook. You know, they'll be in a car on 101. So it, it seems to me those two are interrelated. But maybe that's beyond the scope of what you're doing. You're just trying to accommodate, you know, traffic as it exists now, but, but.
No, that's a great question.
The larger picture is, is we can eliminate whatever traffic problems you're seeing now, at least auto-dependent ones. If we were able to manage the city's growth in a way that accommodates housing at all income levels.
Yeah. Yes. Yep. That's a great question. So from the perspective of what we were looking at as far as the TSP goes, we are aware of development within the city. Like we know there's a lot of new housing and potentially even more planned along like Classic Street. So as we get into the Manzanita specific one, you will see quite a few bicycle and pedestrian improvements proposed along Classic. Really focus on connecting people that are going to be living along that road into Manzanita without having to drive a car. So at the local level, there has been some consideration of kind of where we know development is occurring and making sure that we are providing connections for them to capture, you know, those easiest trips. So like the people walking and biking to the store or to restaurants and helping them not have to drive. There's been some consideration kind of between the three communities about ways to kind of connect them, providing transit, looking at shuttle stops, really trying to facilitate a process so that if somebody were to get to the area, they can park once and not need to make the trips happening between the three communities by using their vehicle. We didn't expand it kind of outside of Manzanita and Nahalem and Wheeler in terms of the land use component of it. There is some of that accounted for in the ODOT forecasts for US 101, which are focused more on regional growth. So we did kind of account for it in that perspective, but for the scope of this, we were primarily focused on kind of those connections between the three cities, how we could facilitate that without the need to drive. And also making it such that once someone can get to one of the three communities, whether that be because they're coming in from somewhere else and they work in the three communities, or if they're visiting, they can park their car and make the rest of their trips either, you know, on a shuttle that's circulating between the three communities or by biking or walking or using, you know, some sort of e-scooter or e-bike.
And if I could just jump in, I would just add that the TSP and the transportation policies that will become part of the comp plan. So that's where I see a lot more integration with not just housing, but with land use and the environment and all the other state planning goals. So as a planner, I never look at one thing at once in terms of you can't just put transportation in a silo, housing in a silo, you know, land use, environment in a silo. So I think that this is, we're getting on our way to being able to do that with a full-on update of that comp plan. And I see this as a great lead-in to being able to do that. If that's helpful.
Yeah, it is. I, I didn't, I don't want him siloed either because it seems to me if there was, maybe you don't need some improvements on 101 to get people, you know, maybe you don't need some improvements on 101 to get people, you know, from their house in Tillamook to their job in Lenida, if there was a place for them to live in Manzanita and walk to work or in Nahalem and bike there. So I, I, I don't know, that, that they, they seem connected to me, but maybe you've already figured that out and you're way ahead of me.
Yeah, we, we certainly recognize that. And we have kind of made all the efforts we can within the scope of this to kind of think about where there's housing either planned or kind of designated by the zoning and the comprehensive plan and make those connections. And then like Scott was mentioning, this is a real opportunity to kind of define some of the policies that need to be incorporated in the comprehensive plan to kind of even further define that connection between transportation and, and land use.
Okay, and then lastly, and I'll be quiet, but on, on your map here, is that showing a, a bike path that would take me? My wife and I want to ride bikes to Frank's for breakfast or lunch, but we don't dare put ourselves on 101 because of that turn up the hill into Nahalem. But is that bottom blue line there a bike path? That's going to enable that without us killing ourselves?
Yep, so that's a proposed bicycle and pedestrian connection. Yeah, from kind of Classic Street over to Nahalem. And the point exactly being that it's kind of connecting people off of US 101 between the two cities. So heard that is a very strong need for this plan to identify some way for people to make that connection without having to go on US 101.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll continue into the Manzanita specifics. So kind of three key needs we heard in additional to kind of those regions, in addition to those regional needs that we just talked about for Manzanita specifically. So a desire for improvement to infrastructure for biking. A lot of people wanting to see enhancements to existing facilities for people walking and biking. Some community members sharing consideration of, you know, people walking or traveling at one speed, which may be very different from the speed of people on a bicycle, especially when we think about electric bikes that can travel at much higher speeds. So really being mindful of like where, where is shared space appropriate? And where do we want to provide some more separation? And then one need unique to Manzanita is just the consideration for interactions with large vehicles traveling to the state park on some of the, the key roadways within the city. So there are two unique goals for each of the three communities. The first one for Manzanita is managing access. So really wanting to think about how we are connecting people to the state park, really looking at how we can minimize cut-through traffic and seasonal congestion. Doing that through kind of improving connections with Manzanita into the neighborhoods within the UGB to improve kind of local circulation and encourage local traffic to use local roads. And then supporting other planning efforts to create non-motorized and transit connections from key destinations to the commercial core. The sixth goal for Manzanita is enhancing economic vibrancy. So really wanting to think about ways to reduce parking demand by providing walking, biking and transit connections to both the commercial core and the beach. So prioritizing low-stress connections. So those are creating bike and pedestrian facilities that feel safe and comfortable for all who want to travel on them specifically for local destination. And then balancing transportation and land use for downtown area and making sure that we're connecting those areas to residential areas. Again, that goal kind of getting at being able to capture those local trips with more walking and biking and reducing the reliance on needing to get in your car to drive to dinner or to, to run errands within Manzanita. So the first component of this is thinking about how we are designating our roads. So what you'll hear this referred to as functional classification, and it's really used to indicate purpose and design function. So want to think about where are high-volume roadways, where we're really focused on people driving and access control, thinking about collector's streets, which are streets designed to distribute between local streets and arterials, and then the local streets being those are that connecting people in residential areas. And the TSP is not proposing to make any changes to the existing functional classification within the city. We are just proposing to kind of further define what these look like. So you can see US 101 is identified as a principal arterial. We know that's a road where we need to maintain focus on mobility and regional traffic. When we get down to collectors, we have Lenida Avenue. We know that's kind of gathering all of your local trips and connecting them to key destinations locally. And then residential streets are how everybody kind of travels to their, you know, specific homes and destinations within the city. And so I'll just kind of quickly kind of share some images of what these are proposed to look like. So the major collector, so this would be Lenida, proposing to keep that as two lanes for vehicles maintaining parking. But as the opportunity presents itself in the future, really looking at opportunities to widen the sidewalk and make more space for people walking. We know that's a key route for access to both the commercial areas and the beach. We do have several streets where we're proposing to maintain two vehicles, travel lanes, and then have a shared use path. So this would be a path kind of outside of the roadway, separated from vehicles. That would be wide enough for people walking and biking. And then for our local streets, we have a number of different treatments proposed for people who are walking and biking on them. They would continue to facilitate two-way travel and we're recommending a width of 22 feet. So this is kind of the component of getting into updates to city standards for what we want streets to look like in the future. So as we get into the pedestrian network, only really proposing one new sidewalk, and that's building out the sidewalk on Ocean Road. So we do know that we need to improve existing sidewalks. You know, I talked about opportunities to kind of widen them where possible, just to make them easier to navigate and address any locations that don't meet the American with Disabilities Act standards. So making sure that there's curb ramps at crossings and that people with mobility challenges can navigate those. There are some roads where the proposed treatment includes shared space for people walking and biking. And then as I just mentioned, some roads where we're proposing recommendations to either add or widen the sidewalks. So as we get into thinking about what the bicycle network could look like, today there are no standards for how specific roadways should provide space for people biking. So we are proposing a number of different facility types that could be used to facilitate this connection. So what you'll hear me talk about separated facilities, sharrows, advisory bike lanes and trails. And you can see anything in blue here is where we're proposing to have some sort of separated facility. The kind of yellowish-orange is where we're proposing sharrows. And then green, we do have a small segment of an existing trail. And then at this time, that kind of more regional connection between Nahalem and Manzanita is identified as a trail. So just showing you kind of what some of those can look like for the proposed separated facilities. As I was mentioning, this is a space kind of separate from vehicle travel. In some cases, this would be shared between people walking and biking. And in other locations, we may want to propose a separate space for those, those two uses. The sharrows, for any of you that aren't familiar, just the marking that actually goes in the pavement indicating that people using a bicycle should actually share that space with vehicles. This is really intended to make sure that people on a bike know where they should be traveling and that vehicles know they should be aware of, of people who might be there on their bikes. Advisory bike lanes would kind of stripe a dash white line on either side of the roadway. And this would be intended for people biking. And if there were to be two cars, they could use that space to pass each other going in opposite directions. And then the last recommendation there is a trail. So this is typically like a softer surface and recommending that be 12-foot wide and include signage and wayfinding so people can kind of know where, how to make connections to those regional destinations. With that, I will stop here on the Manzanita map. And you can see some of those proposed enhancements. Again, these are only projects that are on roadways that are kind of operated and maintained by the city. So those Ocean Road and kind of Classic Street continuing down into the state park as well as US 101 are not shown on this list. So a number of enhancements through signing and striping and kind of the lighter green shown on kind of key roadways. Those are really identified on specific roadways to kind of help facilitate connections to either Lenida or down to the state park. We do have some safety improvements recommended on Lenida. Those are primarily constructing things like curbs all the way out to Ocean Road, making sure that Lenida really feels like kind of your main street and that people know they need to be cognizant of people that might be walking and biking on it. And then also some improvements to Classic Street. So this project does include kind of providing that separated space outside the existing roadway for people walking and biking. We know it's a really important street for connecting down to the state park. We also know that there's a lot of heavy vehicles, like large vehicles, recreational vehicles that travel on that street. So it doesn't feel safe to have, have space within the roadway for people walking and biking. I will pause there for any questions on any of the Manzanita specific projects or, or recommendations.
Kara, this is Lee, just to comment on your slide that's up right now. You're showing Third Street North. A proposal for some enhancements. From Ocean Avenue North, Third Street belongs to Tillamook County.
Okay.
But I actually have a subsequent question about that. I'm wondering that in some of the proposals, all these are wonderful proposals, but obviously they need funding. And there are some limited funding available, but I'm, I'm particularly interested in the, I believe it was called Small City Allotment, which allows for up to a $250,000 project for communities of fewer than 10,000 people or 5,000. At any rate, I'm wondering about a collaboration on that particular aspect, on that particular portion of Third, whether any funding might be available through that source that would be, even though it's Tillamook County, that it could be funded and improved. What, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, so I am going to talk a little bit about funding, including the Small City Allotment here in just a moment. And you are absolutely right, Manzanita would qualify for that. And so for any specific street coordination would have to happen with the agency that owns and operates that. So anything that falls within Tillamook County would need to be kind of done in partnership with them. I will say kind of one thing that we've broadly tried to be very mindful of as we're putting together this project list, especially the ones that are shown in that lighter green there, is just recognizing that we need to be really creative about how we're making space for people walking and biking. And constructing new sidewalks all across Manzanita is not feasible with funding that's available. So that's why you'll see a lot of the recommendations that are focused on creative ways to, to stripe roadways and to create some space for people walking and biking like on the shoulder, such that you can make those local dollars and any grant funding that you're able to secure through a program like that go a bit further. So some of these projects, like the Classic Street project in this case, that would require constructing separated space would likely require funding from a grant source that could provide more than is available within the Small City Allotment. But to your question, Lee, we have tried to focus some of these other projects on Third, on Lakeview, on Manzanita, and some of those connections kind of up north of Manzanita, such that they're implementable with something funds that could be secured through the Small City Allotment. So have kind of identified that as a primary source. I've tried to be creative about ways that we can kind of limit the scope of the projects to achieve what we're trying to do in terms of creating a more connected network for people walking and biking, but also just being realistic about the funding available to do that.
Thank you, Kara.
Kara, just following up a little bit on Lee's comment on Ocean Avenue. Obviously, that's Manzanita's front door to the ocean, right? And so super important street from its design and character and, you know, how it feels and functions. Since that's a county road, and this is probably a broader question, how do we plug into that county process to make sure that it helps align with the vision that the committee has for their village?
Yeah, great question. So we have had engineers from the county involved. So we did have a member of county staff that was part of the Planning Advisory Committee that I talked about earlier, because we did want to vet this with the county and make sure that they weren't seeing any red flags in what we were proposing and that we were, weren't getting out of alignment with their plans for these roadways. This plan really, that kind of goes to the broader point of kind of developing a plan that positions you to advocate regionally. So once you have this adopted plan, you've identified this as a need, you've converted this with the community, that's an opportunity to kind of partner with Tillamook County on something that's a priority for Manzanita. So it's, it's a little bit twofold. One, going through this process to get yourself to the position of being to advocate for knees in Manzanita at the regional level. And then kind of as this plan moves forward, kind of looping in county staff and coordinating with them as, you know, their opportunities to apply for grant funding and, and really drive specific projects on their facilities forward.
Just a quick follow-up question. In your street sections, you've identified certain widths and stuff like that. I, I don't know if there's a standard right, right-of-way width in Manzanita. Perhaps it's said different on different street classifications. But it seems that this is an opportunity to perhaps look forward and think about street sections and the character of those with an integrated approach for stormwater, the bicycles, the cars, you know, all that stuff and how development fronts on these streets. Is that, that's not part of your scope, but that potentially is a, a future scope?
Yep, so like Scott was mentioning earlier, there's the kind of subsequent step to this is going to be updates to transportation policies and standards throughout other city code and documents. And, and that's really what this is positioning you all to do. So this is kind of setting the goals and the vision for the transportation system, making recommendations on, you know, which mode should be prioritized where, what that could look like. And then as part of kind of subsequent efforts, develop updating kind of street standards and land use standards to make sure that you're kind of conditioning development as it occurs and like needs to make street improvements. You all now have some standards in place for what that street should look like as improvements are made. So this is really a step kind of towards positioning you to be able to condition developers to improve or construct roadways to meet the standards that have been set and defined based on who we want to travel where and, and what modes we want to prioritize.
All right, thank you.
Kara, can we back up for a second to the Ocean Road issue?
Kara, can we back up for a second uh to the Ocean Road issue that uh both Tom and Bert brought up earlier? Um, and that is the county's involvement. But the issue of uh, you know, the city and the county and their interaction there, there's a lot of parking along the west side, well, the only parking along uh the beach at all is on the west side of Ocean. But also, once you cross that line uh where the county owns the property of the roadway, you're in the state property now. Does it help or does it hurt to get the state involved in possibly building sidewalk or boardwalk or something along there?
Yeah, any agency that you're kind of touching property or jurisdiction, um you definitely want to have them involved. Um, so if you're kind of, you know, if the ultimate proposal for that area um extends past even the the counties right away and you're getting into state lands, then you you absolutely want to have the um state involved too. Um, and I guess I can let, you know, either James or or Caroline speak to kind of uh the the pros and cons of that. But um that does just bring more partnership to the table, more opportunities to kind of establish uh opportunities for funding and things like that. So um definitely want to have everybody at the table if you're uh touching either roadway or property that's owned owned by either one.
Yeah, hi Caroline here with ODOT. Um, so yeah, I think here you pretty much encompassed it very well. But you know, um, James and I are here to be helpful from the ODOT perspective. Um, so you know, looking at adding boardwalk or adding uh walking. I know that we're working really hard on the Sandbury Trail and getting that built. So pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure is definitely a huge priority for us. And you know, um, that's good to uh keep in mind in looking for grants in the future. Now that we have this transportation system plan, it's really going to help us be able to apply for grants because uh we have a plan, right? So these are kind of uh grant-funded uh projects, and so we're excited about that moving forward.
Thanks, Caroline. Any other questions?
I I do have just a quick follow-up with Caroline. Um, so would we be talking to ODOT when it comes to an ocean road? I mean, this just, this is, you know, far down the road, but would we be talking to ODOT or do we, are we talking to um the state parks? How does?
If if it's uh, Caroline, you want me to answer?
Sure, go first, Scott.
I was just gonna say, if it's outside of this of the county's um road right away, uh it would have to be state parks because they have jurisdiction over anything that happens on the quote unquote beach.
But to Caroline's earlier point, ODOT does um facilitate grant funding for um a number of um grants that are aimed at improving walking and biking um statewide. And so that's something that Caroline um can help the city kind of facilitate, be aware of, keep them up to date on um in partnership with you on kind of making sure you're positioned and and understand um grants that could be available in the future.
So if I understood that correctly, Kara, uh ODOT can help facilitate grants even if the pedestrian or bike path ends up being on the state park property?
Yep, yeah, ODOT um has a number of grant programs that are administered uh through the state um that are um can be used to fund projects that are, you know, not on a state highway or things like that. Even some, and we'll cover this um here shortly, that are more geared towards like trails and kind of separated walking and biking paths. Um, so when it comes to like actual like property and who who owns what and how much of that you can use, uh, that piece would have to come through um state parks. But um city staff have a resource in in ODOT and kind of being aware of and getting connected to uh grant opportunities that could be used to implement um some of these larger scale regional projects.
Mm-hmm, like our um one that comes to mind is our like Community Paths program, right? That is really meant for walking and biking paths. And we've done that on, you know, rail right of way as well as ODOT right of way. So I don't see any big red flags for why um state park right of way would be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, that community, Rock City Rockway just got a Community Paths grant to look at the Sandbury Trail. And if you think about all the players there, it's the city, it's the county, it's the port, because the port owns the right of way. And it's ODOT. So I mean, it's 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 a big group of partners that are working together to try and get this done, especially it's something that complex.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Scott. And this is last thing I'll say, so now we need to move on. But what that looks like um is, you know, you kind of have everyone at the table uh who's on the team building that refinement plan, as Kara said. So this is our long range, this is our big, this is our general project location. So what would happen next is we would do like refinement plans, designs, and then would come construction. So um Community Paths does a refinement plan and then construction. It's kind of a two-part plan.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, a little bit of foreshadowing from some of our private conversation here. This did include a look um kind of looking back over the last couple of years of funding that's been available for transportation. Um, and what if there were no major uh changes to um kind of city funding, what could we expect? So uh we know on average, over the last couple of years within Manzanita, there's been about $40,000 available for transportation funding. Um, so if we look out over 20 years, uh, we're looking at like less than a million dollars available to make these transportation um improvements. So as I mentioned earlier, um, one side of that is trying to be very creative about the types of projects we're recommending, uh realizing there's a need to make local dollars go as far as we can when it comes to transportation. Uh, the flip side of that is that making sure this plan positions you all to uh be able to advocate for grant funding um as it's available to kind of implement some of these different projects. So um what are those options for kind of other ways we could fund some of these? Um, so one is system development charges. So these are charges that can be applied to new development within the city. And we know Manzanita currently has system development charges for water, stormwater, and parks. Um, so one place to start is looking at opportunities to expand that to transportation as well. Um, there are a few other um ways that communities um across the state have approached this. So one is local gas taxes. Um, so implementing a tax um that is basically tied to uh fuel um at the cents per gallon sold. Um, and you can see there that's currently in place and kind of varies in um how much that tax is across different cities using that. Um, urban renewal areas are tax increment financing. So this allows revenue generated from property taxes to improve poorly developed or underdeveloped areas. Um, and then transportation utility fees. So these would be fees collected as part of water or sewer bills um based on the number of trips likely to be generated by um a specific use. Um, the transportation system plan has not kind of dove into any more detail um on these different um options, but just wanted to provide that as something that could be considered moving forward. Um, and then we've talked a lot about the different competitive grants that are out there. Um, these are often distributed by the state or the federal government. Um, uh, this includes things like Small City Allotment that that John was mentioning earlier, uh, the Community Paths program that Caroline was talking about. Um, a lot of the um current funding sources um that are available in this kind of competitive grant space um do provide opportunities to use funding specifically to improve uh uh facilities for people walking and biking. Um, so also kind of keeping that in mind as we're developing this this list of transportation projects and being mindful that the types of funding sources that um are likely to be available in the future. And Caroline, I know you had.
Oh, yeah.
Chime in.
I just wanted to say really quickly back on that funding aspect. So um, yeah, exactly, Kara, you nailed it. So when we go after grants, what's going to happen is um there's usually like a match that the city will have to come up with. So that match can be anywhere from, you know, 20% to 50%. So it'll be on the city to help provide part of that match. Um, but right now, a lot of ODOT's funding sources, because we have depleting revenue because a lot of our resources depend on the gas tax. And as we all know, hybrid vehicles are coming out and the gas tax, um, it's just producing less money because of that, really. Um, which is a good thing that people using less gas, but also puts us in a funky spot because we don't have like money to give away to these TSPs anymore. So we would probably, you know, go after those competitive grants together. And I'm happy to be an asset with that process, uh, working with the city managers and that sort of thing. There's also a lot of grants that are coming out of um the Biden administration. The bipartisan infrastructure bill or law is going to be a really good one, uh, protect those sorts of things. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Thanks, Caroline. Um, so just kind of wanted to wrap up here on the what's next. So we're officially kicking off the TSP adoption process. Um, so kind of you get through that, uh, what do you all need to do to keep driving this forward? So like I mentioned earlier, um, this TSP is really aimed at setting a vision for Manzanita Transportation System, um, providing kind of a a path for where you all want to go. Um, it also will provide direction for you all when making transportation and land use decisions. Um, as Caroline just mentioned, to implement some of these projects, city is going to need to apply for competitive grant um opportunities or explore some of the funding sources um on that previous side. And then also um initiate that project refinement process. So um there's a lot of really great projects on that list. And as funding uh becomes available, um, the city will need to partner with the different stakeholders uh to really refine what those projects look like and develop a plan for um implementation and construction. And with that, I can take any last questions. Um, I can also turn it over to Scott just to talk a little bit more in detail about what this adoption process will look like from here. So I can stop sharing. Um, but yeah, happy to take any last questions on this. Um, and then maybe let Scott chime in too on the adoption side.
Kara, earlier on, you used the term traffic calming. What, for those of us that might not know what that means?
Oh, yeah, great question. Um, so traffic calming is um strategies that helps to slow speed. So some examples of what that might look like and what you'll see kind of woven throughout some of the projects would be um looking at ways to kind of narrow the perceived width of the roadway. So that might be um like extending the curve at intersections to kind of uh narrow the driver's perception of how wide the road might be. Um, there's different striping configurations on the road that we know help to slow people down. Um, really strategies like that that um kind of make people feel like they're driving more like on your main street um and less like on a, you know, a rural highway where they would expect speeds to be much higher.
Got you. Thank you.
I care, this is probably a detailed question, but uh obviously uh some of these projects are fairly large. Uh, is it set up in terms of the funding strategy to get the funding for the design work, which would be significant in some cases? And then the implementation?
Um, so yes, if you kind of, if you dive into the the TSP itself, you'll see that we've included um cost estimates for all of these projects. Um, so those are really aimed at, you know, based on um the high-level project description that we have now, how much do we think these projects will cost to implement? Um, that does include some small portion of that kind of set aside for the design process, knowing that that also um takes resources to complete. Um, that's all um to inform that grant application process. So part of going out and applying for competitive grants is saying how much you think you're going to need uh to implement those projects um when when you get to that point. Um, so while the TSP doesn't come with any funding sources or um any dollars tied to the specific projects um for that implementation piece, we have provided estimates for how much um they're likely to cost uh so that the city um and other stakeholders, ODOT, the county, um are kind of well-positioned in going into that grant process with an understanding of how much uh money would be needed. Um, or, you know, if you're looking at the small amount of local dollars that you have available, um, there's an opportunity to kind of be able to look at that list and say, okay, you know, this striping project was estimated to cost $25,000. This seems like something that we could achieve uh within existing dollars um or maybe with the funding that we can get from like the Small City Allotments program.
You want me to speak a little bit about adoption process?
Yes, take it away, Scott.
Sure. If, I'll I'll keep it pretty, pretty simple, but um and and high level. But this adoption process actually started at the city council meeting on the fifth um when the councils set, kind of directed staff to to notify the state that we're going to be making some potential plan amendments to our comp plan and some other um ordinances. Um, so they directed us to notify the state and to then go to the next planning commission meeting, which we're here at. And um have you do a a nice presentation, remind us that we've been working on this for a couple of years? And um ultimately, uh, hopefully what we're looking for is for the Planning Commission to make a motion to recommend adoption of this. If that occurs, um, well, actually, let me take a step back. So the step, we've already notified the state that we're going to do this, so we've got that ball rolling. Um, the next step is for Planning Commission to make a motion to recommend adoption of the transportation system plan. Um, if that occurs, we would then be uh needing to do public notice for pub- public hearings at city council. And that's where adoption happens. So that would probably likely happen in September, October, uh, maybe even end to October, uh, November. We probably wouldn't be in the August um in the August timeframe, just because we do need to do public noticing for uh public hearing. We have to do two readings, so there will be two council meetings at where we have public hearings where we present to council and and take comments from public on the on the transportation systems plan. If the council decides to adopt these plans, what we do is we actually adopt, we do this in one process. So it's one public hearing, one noticing, but what we're really doing is three different things. We're updating the uh transportation chapter in the comprehensive plan with the recommended policies that are in the transportation system plan. So you get a whole new set of um goals. If you remember the presentation, we had goals, objectives, policies, kind of those are goals, here's objectives and the policies. That's what replaces your comp plan um chapter in in uh your transportation chapter. Um, the other thing we're doing is we're we're updating standards, road standards, uh, which is another city ordinance, as well as some recommended zoning changes. So there's kind of three things that we're adopting. We're adopting the plan itself, the TSP, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, updating a specific chapter and and as well as the uh code, some code work too. So it's a lot to do all at once, but I think it really is, especially with the upcoming comp plan updates. This is kind of one step in that direction. So um any questions on that would, I'd be happy to facilitate that. The the state, the state notice, we have, we have to have at least 35 days for the state to review it. It's called, it's called a post acknowledgement plan amendment. If some of you um commissioners have been around a while, you might have heard of that. It's called a POPA. And basically, when you're adopting something, you have to to let the Department of um Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, know that we're going to amend our codes and our plans so that they can review them. And they have to acknowledge that that the state is okay with this. And once it's acknowledged, um, then you can move forward uh with that adoption. So that has to happen before this the the uh council can adopt. So hopefully that made a little sense. I know I was jumping around a little bit there, but that's the the adoption process in a nutshell.
So Scott, I have a question. This is Frank. Uh, so the TSP is filled with a lot of uh generalities and suggestions.
Yes.
So this is adopted as is, nothing set in stone, though. It still gets to be massaged and tweaked and.
That, yeah, the TSP is not a regulatory document, but the, but the the code, the zoning stuff, the zoning codes and are. And the, and the, of course, the the required improvements would be something that you would adopt, and there would be requirements as part of your your ordinances. And so that's a little different than the TSP. And the TSP also, there's only pieces of that that would be brought into the comp plan, not the entire document.
Okay. So Scott, I'm a little confused. So this commission, this planning commission, we need to approve the the TSP that's been prepared?
Yeah.
To to send it to the city council? I mean.
Yeah, that's the, generally, that's what what happens in in oriented planning is you uh the, we ask the planning commission to do, especially when we're doing land use and transportation things, to just. to just make a recommendation to the council that, yeah, we feel strongly enough about this and we're comfortable enough that we think we need to move forward with the council taking a look at this for adoption purposes. So it's, it's not even, it's more of a recommendation to send the council for adoption is what, that's probably what the motion would be is, is, you know, make a motion to send the transportation system plan to city council for adoption.
And, and when are you looking for that recommendation?
I mean, if, if everyone's as comfortable, comfortable with, with that, I mean, frankly, the city's been working on it for a couple of years now. I know not all of you have been involved in that because quite a few are, you're new. So it is a little bit, you know, some of you aren't as closely tied to this as, as others. But it's really up to you all. I mean, if you, if someone feels like making a motion tonight and if there's others that feel like they weren't closely enough involved because they're new, they don't have to be involved in that part of the recommendation either. The other option is if you feel like you, you need more time, we can, you know, we can always come back and make a recommendation at another meeting. It's slowing the adoption process down, but it's not the end of the world.
Scott, just a question, a new member. Looks like a great plan though. And yes, great work by everybody. I can't wait to get a pair of side hips instead of Frank's there on my bicycle someday over in Nahalem. What, what is our ability to have input to the plan? I mean, are we adopting it as is or if the public or, or the commissioners have a suggestion as well as the city council may have suggestions? So how does that process work?
So, I mean, we could, the way the process is set up is the planning commission has been able to do that throughout this planning process. So the planning commission has had those opportunities to be involved in shaping the plan as well as the public involvement clearly over the past two years. And so we're just wanting you to acknowledge that you think we've gotten far enough to recommend for adoption. Now that being said, you're right, the council could make changes. They could say, we don't like this policy and they could pull a specific policy. They have that, you know, the ability to do that and it, and those changes could happen. I don't know if James or Caroline would like to jump in here?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in that our contract with Kara, as wonderful as she is, is going to be ending soon due to the amount of funding we have left. And so if you did want to continue on longer, you would be looking to not have her support in future work on this. So I would recommend going to adoption or recommending adoption as sooner than later.
I would too.
I appreciate that. And what I'd like for us to do, I know that the, this commission hasn't reviewed the document itself. Is the, I'm looking at something that I got a PCAT. It's a memorandum of the Nahalem Bay TSP dated December 23, 2022, revised March 8, 2023, that has a series of recommendations, including the specific policies that we would drop into our comprehensive plan. And because I don't think any of our commission has actually seen that memo or those recommendations, I would love for us to be able to talk through it next week, next month at our next meeting. I don't, I'll have to ask Scott, the other Scott, what, what's coming down the pike for us. But because it is a change to the comprehensive plan, I would love for us to be able to at least understand what the process is and to understand what each of those policies look like. And I, I agree, I, I, we've had lots of opportunity for input going forward, but I hate to ask a commission to recommend something that they have never even seen. So I, I'm going to put this on the agenda for next month. I'm hoping that Scott won't fight me too hard on that. Just to look through the policies and then also understand the implementing zone, zoning code amendments that would go into it. And part of the reason I want to do this together is this is kind of how I see us doing the entire comprehensive plan rewrite is we'll have people help us understand what the goals and objectives should be, how to craft it into language that will pass the state review and adopt the policies that go into the comprehensive plan. And at the same time, review the kind of changes that would go into the zoning ordinance so that we're constantly updating both and, you know, and we'll get, get to the end of the process. I'm not sure where this, where this memorandum lives and I would love to be able to get it to, if this is what we're, what Kara's group is recommending to us that we adopt, that's taken into account all of that. You know, all of the public input so far, including input from previous commissions.
Karen, I'm sorry, go ahead Scott.
I, I was just going to say, you won't, you won't be adopting that memo and those policies were pulled out of the TSP. So they're exactly the same ones that are in the transportation system plan. If you want to wait, that's fine, but I also caution you, there's not a time where we're making recommendations and reviewing policies. That's kind of, we're kind of past that at this point. So I, I feel like we'd be spinning our wheels and going backwards if we're now having a further discussion about basically giving us more input. Now that being said, I can see why you might not be 100% comfortable with something that you haven't been involved with for the last couple of years, which several of you haven't. So it really is up to you Karen, but I do want to make sure that if we do wait, that we're not, we're not going backwards and re-reviewing decisions that were already made.
I, I agree with you there.
Right. You know, I've only been a commissioner two months longer than Bert. Frank came in with me and I think John did too.
Yeah.
So I know this process has been going on, but if you're asking me to make a decision on rec, making a recommendation that will lead to a change of a chapter of the comprehensive plan, I feel completely unqualified to make a reasoned decision about that based upon, it was an excellent presentation, but I didn't even know about a TSP until I looked at the agenda yesterday. I certainly want to read the plan itself and think about what you've said here and, and I'm hoping we have the luxury of that much time to a next meeting. Otherwise I think in good conscience, I would abstain from any decision on a recommendation at this time.
And I, I, I fully expected that actually because, because you hadn't been involved in it. I don't think it's going to, it's not going to kill the adoption process if you want to wait a month to do that with the planning commission. I do want to remember what James said, we, we do not, we will no longer have consultants and ODOT involved in this. It'll be in the city's hands to, to push this through. That funding cycle and that project's pretty much done.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything in it that scares me, but I would like the commission to be able to evaluate. If for no other reason than it's practice for how we're going to move forward. You know, going forward on the rest of the comprehensive plan.
And I just want to really quickly mention, you know, in this two-year process, there has been extensive public outreach, Kara. And James, you can talk to what that process has been like. I came on this project a little bit later, like I know a lot of us had. Tim Schonkwell, it was the senior transportation planner before I was. So I've even come into this process. You know, I've been here for the last five or six months, right? But, you know, it is really a well-informed document. There's really been all waves of public outreach from empowering and consulting to, you know, talking with citizens about what we can and can't change, you know, over two years. So like I said, like Scott said, we really encourage this to build the momentum and keep it going because it does happen where you spend two years and then the city doesn't adopt it. We're actually having something similar happening right now. So I would really just be cautious with that.
And I would like to say that because our job is to recommend this to the city council, the city council, if they have any red flags that they see that are imminent or concerned about, then that's their job. I'm going to move that we send this to the city council. I want to put it up for a vote because it would have my vote to, to keep this thing moving forward.
Is there a second? We have a motion on the table. Lee, I see your hand is up.
I have a question, Karen. You mentioned about this memo that seems to show up and then disappear and I'm not privy to it. I haven't seen it. It sounds like some of the things that were addressed in there or mentioned include some items that will change the comp plan. And I think it's really critical that we all have a chance to review that. So my question to you is, if your intent is to set this off to next month, will we all have access to that information prior to the meeting?
I'd just like to chime in on that and city staff does have a copy of that. And I believe what Karen's referring to is technical memo 12, which is a draft code amendment. And that's also been available on the project website for review by all of you and the community as well. So do you want to just make that known? That is fully available for review by any members of the public.
Well Kara, thank you for that, but I do have to say that in my review of the material available in relationship to the TSP, I haven't seen those particular documents for chapter 12. So I would like an opportunity to review that before we consider amendments to the, to the comp, comp plan.
Lee, also, just so everybody's aware, these, these, we do technical memos throughout the process and then the TSP is a summary of all of those technical memos. Kara, what were you wanting to say?
Oh, that's an excellent point Caroline. And then also I can develop with Scott to make sure that the link to the project website where all of these documents, including all five volumes of the TSP and all the technical memos live are, are shared with you all. So you know where to find them.
And the only thing I would add is that we're not adopting a technical memo. We're adopting the TSP. So you can review the technical memo, but it's information that led to the development of the TSP which is then adopted.
Yeah, the memo just summarizes.
Yeah, it does.
In a, in a much more, I mean, it's 50 something pages and it's, it's much easier to read than the entire transportation plan, but.
I agree.
That's it. Yeah. So we, we do still have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Hearing none. Thank you Frank for starting us off.
Thank you. I just want to know one thing though. John mentioned the boardwalk. Are we going to put a Ferris wheel up there?
I'm all for it Frank. I just want to be able to walk, but if you want to twirl, that's okay too.
That's, that's the entertainment plan, not necessarily the transportation plan. So stay on target.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead Bert. Can you unmute yourself? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry. The, you, you alluded to some zoning changes and I assume that the zoning changes are specifically ultimately enabling the street sections and, and these kinds of things. And it's not going to go into parking requirements and any land use issues. And so it's going to be very specific to this transportation planning document. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And I, and if I understand correctly, we're, we're not implementing any new zoning changes at this moment. These are recommended to conform our zoning code to the new policies in the comprehensive plan that we're intending to adopt. So the zoning stuff we'll be looking at later, but the whole package is kind of there for us to kind of jump into.
Yeah, I think it'll be super important to, especially for our community and the public to be super clear about what this means and what's being done at each stage so that they recognize of the opportunities in the future for some public comment.
Yeah. And I, and I just want to clarify that if we're not, we're not looking at zoning changes. It's a, it's actually your, it's your, it's probably an order. I don't know off, off the top of my head, it's, it's probably one of the ordinances under the public works where you have your street standards and whatnot. I don't know, Kara, if you can help me with that or if you know what your ordinances there are, but there is not the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head either, but that would all be live in that technical memo.
Great.
Yeah, there are, because they talk about street frontage. There, there are some items in the zoning.
Okay.
But we're, that, that's put in the cart before the horse.
Okay, thanks.
So let us make a plan to address this at our next meeting. And if there, I, I'm assuming that everyone can find the documents on the website. Kara will work with Scott to make sure that that happens. Give it a good read and come prepared to make a recommendation to the council. Next time.
Did I hear Scott volunteer or maybe it was Kara volunteer to put together a list of where everything can be found?
It actually, so I, I just made sure Scott has the link to the project website and it all actually lives on the front page. We have a document library there and all 12 technical memos that we have, as well as all five volumes of the TSP are on that front page. So you can even probably just Google Nahalem Bay TSP and find it, but I'm sure Scott will make sure it makes its way to all of you. But all lives right there on the front landing page. So once you have that link, it should be pretty easy.
Specifically at volumes one, two, and five, is that correct? We won't be making recommendations on any of the other volumes.
No. And James, did you want to chime in there as well?
I have a question about the schedule. If you're meeting next month to decide on the recommendation, can, can Scott still get this on the calendar for the city council in anticipation of that? Or do you need to wait for the recommendation to come?
That's a really good question. I mean.
I'd like to, I'd like to get it on the calendar if we can.
Frank, I mean, we could do, my, my biggest concern is the public notice period, not really getting it on the calendar. Because that can push it out an extra month if the timing is not right between the planning commission and the council meeting. So I suppose what you could do is it could, it could be put on the calendar, the public notice could be done. And if it wasn't a recommendation, then that public notice would have to be redone and reschedule the meeting. I don't know if that would, that would probably be fine.
Yeah, if Leila were here, she would solve that problem for us.
So.
What, what is the public notice period? 30 days?
Yes, I believe so. It's.
Is it publishing in a newspaper or does it need to be in a mailing that goes out to?
Karen, do you recall what, what happened, what you have to do when you do a land use decision? Is it a 30 day and it's typically in the newspaper and mailed to a certain number of people?
I believe it's 35 days. And I may tap James and Andrew Caroline on the, like all the notifications required. I'm not as familiar with that, that side of it.
Well, the 35 days is, is, I know it's for the state. That's a minimum of 35 days for the POPA, but every city has their own ordinance for public notice. And I'm, I apologize, I'm still new and I don't know your ordinance right off the top of my head.
I'm old and I don't know it either. So.
We'll look into that and make sure that we meet that obviously. But I, I do think that I have, I have been in situations before where a meeting has been scheduled, public notice has been done and it's had to be done again because of delays. It's, it happens.
Yeah, I don't want to go to that expense if we don't have to, but.
Yeah, very true.
Have, have Nahalem and Wheeler acted upon the plan?
Wheeler is still in that process because of staff changes on the city side and Nahalem has done all of their notifications and is set for planning commission to recommend this to council this week.
And what happens if, if one or more of, but not all of the cities? I mean, what, what happens if one of them rejects it?
The adoption process is operating totally independently. So while we've kind of been coordinating across the three communities on development of the plan and have been seeking input specifically on the regional portions from all three communities. As we move into this adoption process, the kind of process is, is peeling off, if you will, for the three communities. So it's really incumbent on each community individually to move this through that adoption process and get this in place so that you have those ordinances and standards in place to be able to actually implement it moving forward. and get this in place so that you have those ordinances and standards in place to be able to actually implement it moving forward.
And Karen, is there any indication from any of these other communities that there's any stall that's going to happen? I mean, these meetings have been going on, and this process, as you mentioned, has been ongoing. This has not just happened yesterday. And the people that I talked to, I don't hear anyone talking about a no on this plan.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Has the county adopted the plan as well?
The county does not have to adopt anything, specifically because we're primarily focused on projects mostly within either the city boundaries or the urban growth boundaries. The county will, at some point in the future, update their transportation system plan. That'll be an opportunity for them to kind of revisit some of these overlapping facilities and make sure there's alignment there. But at this time, there's no adoption required from the county.
Okay, anything else?
I see a hand up from Lee and then James.
Karen, would there be any reason to, due to time constraints, to accelerate a meeting, just do a special meeting just for this one issue? Give us a couple of weeks to review the material that some of us haven't seen and get this moving faster than waiting for another month?
I don't see any issues. I just want to check in with our staff, city staff, and make sure that we can set up another DOOM in a couple of weeks and that it, you know, I don't know what your workload looks like, Scott. Is that something that we can do?
I would have to check with Leila because of vacations and everything. I'm not sure if we'll be able to set that up in two weeks.
Okay. Okay, is she, she's out of town, correct?
She's out of town until, I think she'll be back Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, great. Well, I don't object to Lee's suggestion of a special meeting, but again, I don't want to overburden staff with meetings.
Karen, I think two weeks is plenty of time for me to review it. And just for clarification, it would be the 31st of July. Just check the calendar. If we did two weeks from today. And that may help the council out and timing-wise. So I'd be on board with that.
Okay.
Can we set it as a tentative date and move it if we need to?
Let's do that. Let's set it as a tentative date. We'll see how it shakes out with staff, because they're the ones who organize the DOOM and they put out the notices to the public that we're going to have another meeting, so let's see how that works for them.
And I would just really recommend to everyone that as you're reading through and getting comfortable with this, that, you know, we're not wordsmithing policies and going back and making tons of edits like that. We literally don't have consultants to help us with this anymore, and we've come up with a great document over two years. I just, I want to go back to the big picture, and we're looking for overall comfort saying, yeah, we think it's good enough for the council to work through. And I think, you know, Frank, you're right, it is their job if there is things that need to be changed at this point. So I think that the planning commission has been good stewards of this for the last two years, and it's time for the council to take a look at it and make sure that they want to adopt. James, did you have anything?
Yeah, that's a good point, Scott. And I just, we don't have Cara scope for another planning commission meeting, so I can't, I'd have to talk to Cara, but I can't guarantee that she would be there at that next meeting, so Caroline and I would represent as best we could. But we're gonna start to see Cara fade out now. She'll be at the city council meeting, though, should that get to there.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't even know whether this is on an agenda for the city council. Do you know, Scott?
I believe it's on next month's agenda for council.
What date is that?
That would be the 9th. So just looking at the schedule we have now, in order to notice this, Leila won't be back until next week, so I may not even have enough time to get an answer from her, whether or not she'll be available.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the council's meeting on the 9th, and we're not meeting until after that?
Our regular meeting would be after that.
Okay. Well, we're proposing now the 31st or possibly even the 7th, if that gives them a little bit more time. It's at least two days before the council meeting.
Well, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it before the council meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if the 31st is too tight for the city to implement, we could always do it on the 7th, and then they'd know by the 9th, going into their meeting, what we've decided.
The best I can give you is I will send an email to Leila, and if she does see it, and we have enough time to know this and have the meeting, then we'll be able to do it. Otherwise, it'll have to wait until next planning commission meeting.
You mean even as far as the 7th?
Correct, because I'm not gonna make a decision without approval.
Of course.
Based on her schedule.
I mean, yeah, and you know, they, the council has to do two readings, so it's going to be two council meetings as well.
Right.
Minimum.
Okay. All right, and do you know, did I already ask you, Scott, is this on the council's agenda, or do you have any, you probably don't have any?
I'm not sure, Karen. I'm sorry. I don't do the council agendas.
Yeah.
I'll have to shoot something off to Nancy to find out.
Okay.
It was my understanding that it was on next month's council agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I was led to believe that we didn't need a decision this quickly and that August or September would be fine for us, so that's why I suggested August.
And that may be, Karen. Just checking with, I think we just need to check with Leila about what her expectation was for the two, when those two council meetings were going to be held.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can do a 31st. We'll just, in the meantime, everybody, get on the website, read the plan. And as soon as we possibly can, we'll get back together and make a decision. Okay? That said, we can excuse our guests, and Scott, you can tell us if there's anything coming down the pike that we need to be aware of. Scott or Scott.
Yeah. But I believe there's something coming up for next month. I cannot divulge what that is yet. I know Leila was working on it last week when I was gone, so until I get final word on that, I believe she has something to schedule for next month.
Okay.
And it's out of hearing, it's a discussion with the planning commission.
Oh, okay. Oh, I bet I know what it is. I think I know it.
You may know. I just, I'm not gonna divulge that information until.
Yeah, it's not final yet, so, okay.
Okay, so that's.
No worries, as long as we don't have a five-hour hearing to do next, our next agenda. Okay, great.
Karen, I'll shoot an email to Leila, and if I hear back from her, I'll let you know.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Bert, welcome. I hope you enjoyed your first meeting with us. I'm glad you were able to throw in some good questions. Putting yourself to work already.
You threw me into the pool.
This was easy, just wait. Okay, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate it. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, take care.
Bye all.